I'd like to call to order the regular meeting of the village board for January 21st, 2025. May I have a roll call, please?
Trustee Schenk?
Here.
Trustee Marquardt?
Here.
Trustee Forster?
Here.
Trustee Oppenheim?
Here.
Trustee Cook?
Here.
President Byrne?
Here.
And trustee Takaoka has given prior notice that he would not be in attendance.
Is there a motion to appoint a temporary chair for this evening's meeting?
I'd like to nominate trustee Cook to be the president pro temp for the duration of the meeting.
Second?
Motion and a second roll call, please.
Trustee Forster?
Aye.
Trustee Schenk?
Aye.
Trustee Marquardt?
Aye.
Trustee Oppenheim?
Aye.
President Byrne?
Aye.
Trustee Cook?
Aye. Motion carries. So we are called to order. Would everyone please stand for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Are there any citizens that wish to address the board about anything other than what's on the committee hold because if it's on there, we'll let you talk then? No? Okay. Our first item under the village president, we have a proclamation on the retirement of Pete Nielsen, Public Works Department. In recognition of service, crew leader Pete Nielsen, Vernon Hills Public Works Department. Whereas Pete Nielsen began employment with the village of Vernon Hills in the Public Works Department as a maintenance two on March 11th, 1979. And ended his 45 years and 10 months of dedicated service to the village as a crew leader for the streets division. Pete assisted in the overseeing of the day-to-day operations and activities as a supervisor of the streets division by coordinating maintenance contracts, overseeing budgetary items, and above all, being hands-on in the field with his staff. Pete also proudly served as a snow fighter by dedicating many tiring hours behind the wheels of snowplow, driving in excess of 100,000 miles throughout his career, keeping the streets safe for our residents. Pete is known as being hardworking and a humble family man with a big heart, giving the benefit of the doubt whenever possible and giving everyone a fighting chance. Pete enjoys working with the Boy Scout troops, volunteering his time at their camp by improving their facility and grounds whenever the need is there. When not volunteering and spending time with his family and friends, Pete enjoys watching Old Westerns and the Chicago Cubs. Pete has been a beneficial asset to the Vernon Hills Public Works Department throughout his career, serving with professionalism and distinction, and currently holds the record of being the longest-serving village employee. Now therefore be it proclaimed that president and the board of trustees of the village of Vernon Hills, on behalf of the entire Vernon Hills community, extend to Pete Nielsen their gratitude and thanks for his 45-plus years of service to the community and to the public works profession. Congratulations, Pete. And I have this for you.
Thank you very much.
Yeah. You do know that now that you're not working, the Cubs are playing the Dodgers in Tokyo in March? Yeah, yeah. Cubs open the season in Tokyo, so if you want to, you know.
Thank you. Thank you. Appreciate it. It's been a wonderful, wonderful. I don't think there's been many days, but I haven't looked forward to going to work. Thank you, sir. Thank you.
What are you gonna do?
A little hot fish in. Thank you. To be honest, it was nine below this morning. Which today, why did I say? I didn't mind saying that.
He didn't say ice fishing. Well, seriously, thank you. That's an incredible, an incredible amount of time and incredible amount of dedication. Dave, did you want to say something?
I definitely want to say something before Pete runs out of the door. Pete, you want to come up? I thought you were getting off.
And Dave, you.
I'll be brief.
I know anybody pretty much knows you, but you might want to mention for those who might not.
My name's David Brown, retired.
Retired public works director, yeah.
First, I want to thank the board, all the staff, trustee Ferillo, everyone. What you guys do for this village is amazing, historically, many years. We all miss ex-mayor Barbara Williams too. She's in our hearts and prayers. But thank you all for what you do. Looking back at how long Pete has actually worked for the village, four and a half decades, 45 years, some of the things that everyone's going to miss of Pete is all the historical knowledge that Pete brings to the table. He knows everything that has happened in this village since back in the cornfield days. We may all recall when the development of Vernon Hills first happened. And, you know, we weren't necessarily ready for development 50 years ago. And Pete ended up going into a lot of those subdivisions and went through and fixed all of their drainage structures, just one after another. I bet you hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of those. But what I really want to point out is just Pete is, represents not just the department, but the village, and how hard he worked every day. He will push people out of the way. He'll lead by example, and just really proud of that. It is very difficult on people who do snowplowing. I know trustee Marquardt, that's something that you're rather fond of also. But Pete, over 45 years of putting aside things that were important to his family because it's snowing. Where I retired to, up in the Upper Peninsula of Michigan, they got seven inches of snow yesterday. The record is 396 inches of snow, but that's easy to do. You just send out a big snow blower on the front of equipment. It blows into trucks, they haul it away. Here, making those calls and trying to figure out when you're going to get home to see loved ones, et cetera, that's what Pete had to live through for 45 years. Here, it's at the frost belt where it melts overnight, it freezes, you never know when you're going to run into difficult situations. And Pete was here fighting that every, every snowstorm. So just proud of what Pete has done for our department and for the village. And wish you well in your retirement, and hopefully the Cubs do good, but not as good as, not as good as my Cincinnati Reds. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Dave. Appreciate it. Thank you all very much.
Thank you. No, seriously, to put it into a historical perspective, the mall's only been open about six years, and most of New Century Town and Deer Path, that had just been built.
Yeah, there was a.
They were still building it, in fact.
I don't know, it was up there, some kind of annual farm place up in the corner of Deer Path, or 60 and 21. The apartments were still up here, all the houses.
Yeah.
The swimming pool, we rebuilt the swimming pool. That's how the first swimming pool was. Took a bulldozer around and bulldozed all the old concrete, poured new concrete, figured out how to run the pumps in the village antipole, my first pool. It's been a good run, and I have to thank the village, everyone, for taking care of me for so long. My whole family. It's been wonderful. It's been like a big family here, so thank you very much once again.
Thank you. Thank you, Pete. Okay, all right. Village manager, presentation of the United Way 211?
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. We are all familiar that during an emergency, we know the number 911 to call for police and fire. But there's actually another number that you can call in Lake County, and we have representatives from United Way of Lake County here, Ms. Balderas and Ms. Burnett, to speak on some of the services of United Way.
Okay, good evening. I'm Laura Josephson Burnett. I'm a longtime Vernon Hills resident, and I'm here with Yahira Balderas. She is the community engagement coordinator for Lake County 211.
Sorry, this is an opening from upstairs. I apologize.
Oh, okay. Thank you. I'm just going to give a little intro.
Sure.
Okay. Thank you. All right, well, thank you so much. We're so appreciative to all the board, the managers, the officers, the staff, the attorney, everyone for inviting 211 here today. I got exposed to 211, which has been in existence about five years. I often mediate and help people in the Lake County courts, and I would have lists and numbers of places to try to connect litigants to who weren't getting remedies in the court, or maybe they were a witness that needed a remedy, and I was just always trying to connect them. It wasn't very seamless, right? And then 211 came into existence. And now I could just point people to 211. And they could be connected to social services, get referrals for all sorts of different things, which we'll learn about. And 211 has made a significant impact in Lake County. So I'm very grateful, and then I joined the advisory board of 211, and I'm seeing the amazing work that 211 is doing. And 211 not only does all this work, but collects incredible data. And you'll hear more about this. I was surprised to learn that of all of the county, all of the villages and towns in Lake County, that Vernon Hills is the eighth-most called-from village in Lake County in the last five years. And now in the last quarter, it's moved up to the seventh spot. So we have a lot of residents here in Vernon Hills who are seeking out help, which I'm grateful for, but I think it's important for the board and the village to understand what our residents are needing so we can help them better. So with that, I'm, she is the expert. I'm going to sit down now, and now you can hear from Yahira, who is the expert in 211, and also is a former Hawthorne student. So, thank you so much.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for giving me the time to address 211. So that was a great intro. I want to start off by saying 211 is part of United Way. And at United Way, we unite leadership and resources to create lasting change that will improve and save lives across the cities and towns of Lake County. And we do so by three core programs, which is Success by Six, Ju- Ju- Success Program, and 211. 211 has been in existence for five years, and we can learn a little bit more about it. So what is 211? Well, get connected, get help. We are Lake County's most comprehensive database for human services, social services, and healthcare services as well. And up on the screen, you'll see three magic numbers. When your house is on fire, when you have a medical emergency, that's when you call 211. When you're having a crisis, suicidal thoughts, you call 988. And 211 is for everything else. Now what falls under everything else? Food, housing, transportation, healthcare referrals, support, homelessness counseling, and other support groups. And up here, you can see a little bit of how our database is categorized. We have housing, utilities, food, crisis help, so on and so forth. It's more than just a database, it is also a resource helpline. And what we do is we access streamline. We streamline access to basic human services and with causes of determinance of health. If you look up there, some of the calls we answer are something like, "I need food for my family," or "I need healthcare," "I need job," or "I can't pay my rent or utilities," or simply, "I'm having a bad day and I need mental health support." So where do you go? Where do you start a search? Without 211, people were often left to hunt for those resources. Google search is too broad. We have to keep narrowing, we have to call many different places. Now with 211, you can make one phone call, one text, or one website search, and access resources that are near you and that are accessible to everyone in Lake County. How does it work? Well, first of all, 211 is open to everyone in Lake County. It's completely free, it's confidential, and we are open 24/7. It's accessible regardless of which language you speak, social status, economic status, or legal status. And it's always confidential. Our hotline is staffed by expert navigators, and it's always going to be a human answering that phone call. There's three main ways to connect with 211. One is dialing 211 from any phone. You can also text your SIP code to the number 898-211, or visit our website, which gives you access to information from our database at 211lakecounty.org. Here's a little bit about what happens when you call. When you speak to a navigator, our navigator seeks to understand the needs of the caller, not just the needs, but also seek a little more. If someone calls for a job, someone can call in and say, "I lost my job and I don't know what to do." And they're focused on finding a job. But the navigator understands that with losing your job, you may not be able to pay rent, utilities, or have access to healthcare. So we anticipate those needs and provide those resources that are available to you. One of the things is individuals decide how much info they are comfortable sharing, which questions are comfortable sharing. And all of our navigators are trauma-informed. It is important for us to make sure that not only are navigators are understanding the needs, but they are also making it as comfortable as possible for that individual facing a crisis. One of the great things about 211 is the data collection piece, because we understand what the resources are in their community versus what's actually needed. We understand those service gaps, and we can also understand and assess further needs. So I'm going to give you a little bit of information about who calls 211 from Vernon Hills. So last, within the last fiscal year, 340 contacts were made. That's 340. Other calls, a combination of calls and texts and website searches are not within this number. 598 needs were addressed, and 543 referrals were made. Some of the top needs are housing, shelter, mental health and addiction, government and legal aid, healthcare, utilities, employment and income, and food. Those are the top needs of Vernon Hills, according to the data we've collected. Some under housing and shelter, it could be something like rent payment assistance, subsidized housing, shelters, transitional housing. When it comes to food, it's pantries, access to low-cost healthcare referrals, and also just general relief. Is this shocking anyone?
It's very eye-opening that, you know, you always know that there's needs out there, but knowing that they have a place that people are calling is wonderful.
So a little bit about the stats, the top needs again, 71% referrals were made. That means that they were able to access those resources. The remainder of 24% that were not able to access the needs they were requesting is because those services do not exist. Some of those services would be homeless motel vouchers, water service payment assistance, automotive repair and maintenance, water service providers, autism therapy. Those are just some of the categories that do not, we just don't have access to, and therefore we cannot make that referral. About demographics, so who's calling? Most of our callers are women, 71% versus 20% men. Ages 35 to 44 are our top callers. And higher needs are mental health, 10%, government and legal aid at 8%, and healthcare 7%. So that is the contrast between other counties. Other counties are pretty much the same across the board, food, utilities, basic needs. And there you have it. Here's a little snapshot of what we're seeing with 211, services that have not been addressed, and services we are hoping to have access to providing in the future. And going back to community support, so for community support, we offer hot topics on our website. If you look at the top graphic, that's what our website looks like. And under hot topics are items that we are seeing, things that change quickly within the county. One of those would be the heating shelters, or heating centers, I'm sorry. Temperatures drop, where do people go when they don't have a roof over their heads? They can look on our website, they can call, they can go to any of our partner organizations, and they can find these warming centers. There's also, we also provide materials for anyone in Lake County who's willing to distribute them. There are first responder cards that have information about how to contact us, and the services provided through 211. We also offer trainings on how you can search our website and be able to get the resources needed for your constituents. And that's basically 211 in a nutshell. So if anyone has questions, I would like to answer them.
My question for the staff, do we have a, we already have a link for this, right, on our, on our website, correct?
That's correct. We, as you know, we did a website redesign last year. We actually have it, I believe, on two locations on our homepage. At the top right corner, next to our social media links, there's a link to 211. And then I believe it's also featured in our community section in the middle of the website, so.
Right, good.
I think in addition to that, we also have some hard materials at our front counter for residents that come in person to the village hall to take with them. Yeah.
Because these are all, you know, excellent services and stuff that's, you know, as your statistics have shown, you know, needed.
I would say, I think it was about three years ago when we kind of were meeting with the community leaders about addressing the mental health needs. And out of that came the District 128 Mental Health Committee. And each month they meet, and they bring in speakers, and they have local leaders, religious leaders, park district, all kinds of people who were there, they encounter the public. And 211 came a few years ago and presented. I don't know if you were there or not, but it was, I mean, it was great, and that was when we decided to put it on the website. I had asked the school districts at that meeting to also put it on the website. I don't think it's there, so my, you know, I know Laura's a tough cookie over there, I'm sure you are too, to get it, talk to the districts and see if you can get it on there, because there is that need. But maybe because there was such attention to mental health, this is interesting to see, that was your number-one call for Vernon Hills, and a lot of those, it's Libertyville and Vernon Hills, that committee. But I can get you guys in touch with who runs that now, to kind of like re-up it a little bit, because it's a need, and you guys are providing it. And it's wonderful to see how many referrals that you're getting. Do you follow up with them at all?
We do, not in every case. We just don't have the capability and the bandwidth to do so. However, with one call, we address multiple needs. So there are some individuals who need a little bit more help, and therefore need a follow-through.
And the referrals, you send them to, who vets those? Is that, they're just?
We do. So we do, part of my job is not only finding those resources, but banning them, making sure everything is up to date. Database is only as good as we can maintain it.
Right, right.
So that is what we do. We don't just take any resource and throw it in our database. It has to go through a process. It has to be a resource that is either free or very low-cost, very accessible. And we have been working with the ESL programs in both Barton Hills and Mandalang. We are trying to get more into the high schools, under, give, give teens the opportunity to advocate for themselves and have access to resources. We know that teens don't really talk about their emotions. It's becoming more of a mental health problem with that age group. So we want to make sure they know that if they do not want to talk to mom, dad, if they feel more comfortable seeking out help through a stranger or needing someone to just help, they can do so through 211. There is that text feature, so if they don't feel like calling, they can access it through the website, or they can simply text.
Do you have your number, demographic on your teenager calls, or?
For the teenager calls, of course. So that is our fourth. So our top is people between 35 and 44. After that, it's 55 to 64, so we're getting to the senior years. And right beneath that is 18 to 24 at 16, 16%. So if, if we can get information to teens, that would be a great resource for them as well.
Well, we could probably help with, with the schools, you know, if we can help bridge that gap, if you guys are having trouble with them, so.
I was going to say too, in regards to the schools, although that demographic is probably more interested in mental health and social support, social media impacts, that kind of stuff. Some of the kids in the school age probably also perhaps carry some burdens of their parents and are looking for resources for their parents too. So it's being inclusive of all of the categories that you guys support, there are those, those young children out there who are trying to help mom and dad behind, you know, with other issues that they see the stresses in their house.
We see very few of those calls, and I think it's just because we have not had the opportunity to directly reach out to them. Again, it's sensitive information. How do you address this with little children? But I do understand the burden of children who may be first-generation Americans, who have a language barrier, who have to translate for their parents, their neighbors, so on and so forth. It's an extra burden.
And then I'm also just curious about the people, your navigators, I believe you call them?
Yes.
What is their experience level? Are they volunteer? Are they staff? Are they trained? I'm just kind of curious.
They are trained. They are golden certified. They are trauma-informed, so they do follow a trauma-informed process to collect this information. When somebody calls in, let's say someone is in abusive relationship, it's very important for us to not re-traumatize them, having started their story over and over again. A ticket is open, so when they call, they don't have to start their story from scratch.
And they're told that when they call? You can call back?
Yes, it's confidential, and they can call anytime.
Thank you.
Of course. Any other questions?
Any other questions for the board? Okay. Thank you very much for coming today.
Thank you so much for your time. I did bring extra cards, first responder cards and rec cards, if you'd like to put them out there. If you have any group, parent group, Bible group, and we can come out and talk about 211, we greatly appreciate that time.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Okay. Anybody else on staff have a speaking part tonight? No? No, okay. Then the next item would be the omnibus vote agenda. Is there a motion to approve items A through G?
Motion to approve items A through G.
Second? Motion is second. Any comments or questions about any of the items? Okay, hearing none. A roll call, please.
Trustee Marquardt?
Aye.
Trustee Forster?
Aye.
Trustee Oppenheim?
Aye.
Trustee Schenk?
Aye.
President Byrne?
Aye.
Chairman Pro Tem Cook?
Aye. Motion carries. Okay, we have no unfinished business. New business, none of that. Communications. We did have one sort of sad communication. We did have one sort of sad communication, very sad communication. Unfortunately, the village, we learned just recently of the passing of one of the members of our senior organization, Christopher Licaros. Chris was a veteran who was about to be honored by our, our Veteran Banner Program. John and I met him at the, at the senior luncheon at Christmas time. John, do you want to?
Absolutely, thank you for this moment. One of the more enjoyable components of this position is the community engagement component and being able to stay connected to our village seniors. And anytime we have the opportunity to share their experiences and their history and celebrate service, we're honored to do so. So thanks for this moment. Many of us, as you mentioned, Trustee Cook participated, attended the seniors holiday banquet. And you spoke on many village programs and we had the opportunity to jointly speak on the Military Banner Program and provide information on this. And we learned a couple of the attendings in the audience hadn't heard of it and they were excited to nominate a couple of their family members. So the family of Christopher Licaros put in an application. And one is what you see as pictured above, but just as impressive is they raised a daughter, who I believe is a student of yours at Hawthorne, went on to graduate from Vernon Hills High School and is now a Lieutenant Commander in the U.S. Navy. So these banners were recently produced and Mrs. Licaros was really looking forward to the moment of having her, her, her husband and daughter at our celebration that we do every May. Unfortunately, we learned that Christopher passed late last week. And the seniors organization and family let us know of that. And they invited staff to attend services which were earlier today. I hope we were able to provide some comfort to the family. We did share that the banners were produced and that, you know, the family will be still invited to our celebration that we have at the municipal golf course and later here for the official revealing. But we are sorry to, you know, share in the information of the passing of Christopher and we send our condolences to their family. We did share that the banners will be hung together where everyone can see father and daughter. And we can celebrate their legacy of service and their sense of family together this year. So Chris will, will make sure that those two banners are hung together somewhere for the family to see. So thank you for the moment to share that story.
Yeah, thank you, thank you for bringing that to our attention. Anybody else have any communications? Okay, then entertain a motion to adjourn the board meeting and go to committee of the whole?
I move to adjourn the meeting. Go to committee of the whole.
Motion is second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Okay, the ayes have it. We are adjourned. You want to go ahead and start?
Yes. I'd like to call to order the January twenty first, two thousand twenty five Committee of the Whole Meeting. May I have a roll call, please?
Trustee Schenk.
Here.
Trustee Forster.
Here.
Trustee Markwart.
Here.
Trustee Oppenheim.
Here.
Trustee Cook.
Here.
President Byrne. And Trustee, Trustee Takaoke gave prior notice that he did not be in attendance.
Is there a motion to appoint the chairman pro tem for this evening's committee meeting?
I'd like to nominate Trustee Cook to be chairman pro tem for the duration of the meeting.
Second.
Okay, motion is second, roll call please.
Trustee Schenk.
Aye.
Trustee Oppenheim.
Aye.
Trustee Markwart.
Aye.
Trustee Forster.
Aye.
Trustee Cook.
Aye.
President Byrne.
Okay, motion carries. First item of business is the approval of the Committee of the Whole Meeting minutes of December seventeenth, two thousand twenty four. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion is second. Any comments, questions, corrections, additions? Hearing none, roll call please.
Trustee Schenk.
Aye.
Trustee Oppenheim.
Aye.
Trustee Markwart.
Aye.
Trustee Forster.
Aye.
President Byrne.
Aye.
Chairman Pro Tem Cook.
Aye. Motion carries. Next item on the Committee of the Whole is a concept discussion for Guzman I Gomez, seven oh one North Milwaukee Avenue, unit three fifty four. Director Jennings?
Thank you. Guzman I Gomez is a quick serve Mexican restaurant chain based originally out of Australia. They're proposing to construct a new restaurant with a drive through at unit three fifty four at River Tree, currently occupied by Top Fitness. I'll introduce the, the group in just a moment here, but hitting some of the highlights from the staff memo. The, the initial staff review identified three issues with this. There's a setback variation request in discussion with the restaurant group and their representatives. They have reduced the amount of that variation. There's a sixty foot front setback required at this location. They are now proposing a forty seven foot setback, so it's a reduction of thirteen feet. We had also identified an issue with potential emergency access. We did speak with the Fire Protection District. They do not require a bypass lane at this location, so that issue has been addressed. And then we did ask the, the group to do a preliminary review of traffic. There's an existing condition here where the north south driveway directly to the east of this site does queue past the east west connector road. So we had some concern that having a drive through located here, you might have a traffic conflict. Their, their traffic consultant did take a look at this. I think I included the entire thing with the, with the staff memo here. So their preliminary analysis indicates that it will not be a significant issue. There is another exit along Milwaukee. They did recommend though, do not block the intersection sign just to discourage people from coming out into the, to the southbound lanes there. So with that, I would like to introduce Jason Trombley from Guzman I Gomez to give you a quick introduction to the, to the proposed restaurant.
Hi, guys. Thank you, Andrew. Thank you, Committee of the Whole. Appreciate your time today and your consideration of Guzman I Gomez coming to your community. I will get into Guzman and Gomez in a second, but I want to tell you, I, I, I'm not, I don't live in Vernon Hills, but I live in Lake Bluff. I have four young children, twelve, nine, seven, and five. And I'll tell you, I'm in your community three, four times a week. We were at Sky Zone, we're at Little Kickers, we're at the theater all the time, we're at Chick-fil-A. Most of the time in any area we have in Lake County, we always end up somehow at that Chick-fil-A, the drive through before we, before we go home. I'm also on the, have the back to back champion of the Vernon Hills Thursday Night Men's Softball League, so I have that distinction as well. So I'm in your community quite a bit. And I've been in commercial, commercial real estate for twenty years. And the Hawthorne Mall, super regional trade area, as we in the business call it, has always been a top destination for any of my retail clients over the past twenty years. And I, I, I was Guzman I Gomez retail broker for eight years before, before they brought me on to be their head of U.S. development, which is my current position. And I have had that position for the past three years. Guzman I Gomez first started in the, quick overview, they have, the founder is a New York, former New York resident, moved to Australia after having some success on Wall Street. And his time in Australia, he said, what am I missing? I miss great Mexican food. So his dream and was to, was to bring a good Mexican concept to Australia. This was in two thousand six. He brought in the best restaurateurs from Mexico, best artists from Mexico to help design the concept and the food and the menu. Seventeen years later, he now has two hundred and forty restaurants globally, most in Sydney, most in Australia, and then ten in Tokyo and another handful, seven or eight in Singapore. We now have five in the U.S. The first one was January twenty twenty in Naperville. Then COVID hit, so that kind of shut down any kind of pipeline or development that we had at that time. Pipeline picked back up somewhat where we opened three in two thousand twenty three. Those were in Schaumburg, Crystal Lake, and Buffalo Grove. So we had four restaurants for a year before opening just our fifth restaurant last week in Deerfield. Two rave reviews. The concept's all about food first, people second, and community and culture third, as, as tenants. Everything on the menu is made fresh daily. It's, the idea is, you might have seen, you know, concepts over the past decade, the big idea is being a disruptor of, of any industry. Our founder likes Stephen Marx used to say that we are disrupting the fast food industry because it doesn't make sense where it has to be, just because it's fast doesn't mean it has to be bad quality. Everything's made fresh daily. It's imported from Mexico, it's imported from, pieces are imported from Australia where it makes sense, but mostly the, the contents are from Mexico. Again, everything made fresh daily. It's clean for the most part, everything's, it's ninety eight percent clean except for our churro. We can't, we haven't figured out how to make a churro clean yet, but everything else is made without chemicals, without any extras in, in the food itself. So it's high quality, restaurant quality food just made first. So that's the concept, that's the idea. We have plans for probably, I'm going to open four to five restaurants this year. So we're going to pretty much double our restaurant count in Chicagoland. And by the time this would open in two thousand twenty six with, you know, negotiate the lease, go traverse through your process and, and hopefully eventually garner your support and approvals. We will start construction probably later this year and for a two thousand twenty six opening. So it would probably be more of our eleventh or twelfth store at the end of the day. And the goal is to have fifteen to twenty stores in Chicago. You know, high tide raises all boats. It becomes the brand awareness helps, then we franchise out and, and put the concept in other markets in the U.S. With the goal of being the biggest and best restaurant company in the world. That, does anyone have any questions on the concept itself before we go over the plan specifically?
I've actually been by the one, by Darling Harbor near the Park Royal Hotel in Sydney.
Going away.
In fact, we almost ate there. We ran out of time because we were only in Sydney for a couple of days. But I remember it stuck out that it was a mostly yellow building and I remember noticing it right away. And, and, and then the name. And it was kind of like, oh, here in Sydney and it's a Mexican restaurant. And we were, it was on our list to get to, but ran out of time.
Oh, that seems, that would have been great if you went. Yeah, the, the name is after his two childhood friends, the founder's two childhood friends from back on Long Island.
You are aware that you will complete the square of Mexican restaurants in that area and all corners. Uncle Julio's Invicto, Taco Bell and you and Hacienda Real going in down the street.
Well, we're a big Uncle Julio's family. I, I think, are they closing some of those? I think that's a rumor out there. But regardless.
Your marketing analysis or come from where?
Yeah. No, it's.
Like, where do your marketing analysises come from?
Where do I, marketing?
Where do your marketing analysises, analysis come from to find a location?
I've been doing it for twenty some years, so I, I know all the trade areas like the back of my hand in general. We use basic demographic data of, you know, where people come from, where they draw from, use tools. There's ever evolving tools. Currently, it's a, you know, cell phone based technology telling where people come from and where they shop and where they spend their time. We have a lot of that data. We have a lot of restaurant sales data at our, at our disposal that I get from different sources. All telling me that, you know, being in Vernon Hills is one of the top places to be in all of Chicago.
Is this a corporate or a franchised own then?
Corporate, they're all the corporate.
All corporate in U.S.?
All.
Do you have franchise in other countries? Is that?
Yes, franchise in other countries.
I saw that map.
That was the fastest way to grow.
Do you have plans to franchise then in the U.S. if you get to a certain number or?
Yeah, the, the plan is to, no one likes, the word curates used too much these days, but to curate the corp, the growth of the, of the brand through corporate oversight. Build the brand, build the sales and then, and then, you know, make it attractive enough for a franchisee to want to take this to the, to another, another state, another city, another market.
So do you do corporate training for your people that work in the stores or is it all by store?
We do, we, we train relentlessly in any and all aspects constantly.
Are your corporate offices, U.S. corporate offices, I mean, it seems like everything's in Illinois right now, is that where they are?
Everything's in Illinois, U.S. corporate office is in Illinois. You know, the, the, there's a ten person corporate team. We get together multiple times a week at all the stores.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions or we'll, we'll get to the presentation? Okay.
And real quick, just at this point, some folks will probably help me out by chance. I have friends from Kim Lee Horn, Ian and Justin, and from our legal team, Elrod Friedman, we have Brooke. So here's our plan. Another part of my personal story with, with this trade area is we come here a lot. And my wife with the four kids, it's really tough to get out of the car and get back in the car. There aren't a ton of drive throughs here in Vernon Hills relatively that you'd find in other trade areas. We actually tried with Guzman, we tried to put a drive through at the, at the Denny's years ago when that first became available and was on the market. We were working with the local developer to do that and ultimately that failed, I think, I believe at this process because the drive through was eventually disallowed on the whole Hawthorne Mall property. But we spent a considerable amount of time, effort and money to do that concept. That was four years ago. And ultimately, you guys went with Wild Fork and Kava. So, you know, disappointing for my wife, she's like, I can't ever find a drive through of one where in Vernon Hills or, or wherever to go. And so she always ends up at Chick-fil-A except on Sundays. So especially when she's at, on Sunday, when she's, we're at Sky Zone or Little Kickers, she's like, what am I, where am I going to go? So that's part of this, it's like almost a personal sort of mission here to try and bring Guzman I Gomez drive through to the, the trade area. So here's our, our plan with the drive through. This is a, our trademark drive through. Our first four restaurants are all drive through. Deerfield was an inline location. Evanston, which opens next in March, will be, be another inline location. This is going back to our drive through because we believe this is, you know, heavily trafficked area that can afford, that affords drive through. So that's what we're going to go for here. We believe this layout is, is the most efficient we've worked out thus far. Of course, we can continue to tweak it. As was stated by Andrew, we brought back the setback of, we're, we're going to need a variance of thirteen feet on that setback. And an escape lane isn't required, but we believe this gives enough drive through and parking to, to have a successful store. So our elevation, not quite as much yellow, Mr. Cook.
Yeah.
Trustee Cook.
That, that building, if I remember it, was almost totally.
Yeah, we get away with a lot more in Australia than we do in, in a lot of U.S. communities.
That, that's why I noticed it.
Yep. And that's why the founder loves to put yellow everywhere because you notice it. We're, we're, he knows, but we're kind of reminding him how we can't do quite as much yellow in the States. But we're trying to put these elements as much as we can of the brand on the store so people know who we are and where we're going and we can continue to build that brand.
You're serving liquor?
We will request a liquor license for margaritas. We have a strawberry and a regular margarita. And then we serve beer and we serve a couple of beers.
What about on the drive through and pickup?
We, you cannot take alcohol out of the drive through nor pick it up.
So what percentage of your patrons are drive through versus sit in?
Believe the facts are in the materials, I'm not quite sure, I can't quote it. I don't know if it was in there, I'm sorry. Andrew?
I think you had a target of fifty percent, but expected it to be less for the first few years.
That's, that sounds about right. Fifty fifty is where we like to, where we like it to be. Projected sales of, we'd love to be, you know, two and a half to three million and we'd love to be more, but, you know, we are, we're performing two point five to three million bucks a year.
Any comments or questions from the board, anything we're looking at here?
I'm not happy with the setback variance. I like to keep it at sixty feet. Is sixty feet the, is ordinance, correct?
Yeah.
Yeah, especially in that corridor. Because then you're going to have cars also in addition to that lined up that are pushing with the appearances even closer to Milwaukee.
Yeah.
The, part of the reason I was asking about what percentage of patrons are, are sit ins, I was wondering if you could move the building south and get rid of some of those parking and have two lanes. And so in addition to the appearance of the one building being much closer to sixty, I also don't love the idea of having so many cars in queue with no escape route, even if the fire marshal doesn't require it. At the, the restaurant that you'd mentioned numerous times that you can't go to on Sunday, you're, you're locked in there if there's an issue. And we've experienced that in our family where someone had to wait over half an hour just to get a coffee because the line got stuck. Now this before they made some changes, but things happen, so. Even if you can, even if you can block, you know, make it two lanes. Um, even if you can, even if you can block, you know, make it two lanes part of the way so you can get around the, the lead car there, that would help. But I'd, I'd prefer to see the building further south if there's a way. I, I don't know if there is, but.
We'll, of course, take all comments back and.
What, uh, what's the parking situation in Buffalo Grove? How many spots do they have there?
Uh, we have at least 30 spaces on our own parcel and, but we are a part of the larger center with cross-ease parking.
Would you have cross-ease with, uh, the lot to the south of you?
We do.
For this one?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Well, just as a historical note, since you like Chick-fil-A, their original drawing had a significantly different drive-through. And after we went round and round here for a while, they finally wound up going with our suggestion and it's been really good, so.
I'm happy to take any and all suggestions and.
Does your demand, is the need for a side-by-side drive-through, side-by-side ordering?
That is, that is the prototype that we've gone with. Uh, we will consider not doing that if that, if that would help the overall situation. Nothing there is, uh, is, is complete set in stone. That's just the prototype.
Well, nothing's set in stone yet.
Right, right, right. A hundred percent. We can, we have ultimate flexibility to work with you and modify as needed.
Well, I understand the, the extra lane gives extra queuing, um, but you plan to have two ordering modules?
Yes. A big component and differentiator for us is the speed with which we can provide fresh food. So, uh, when these are humming, that, that runs, that runs like a machine, folks are, are out of there. The goal is always under four minutes, um, for anyone to go from, from, the minute they pull onto the pad, that senses that they're there to out, out the, get their food and gone. Four minutes is the, is the key performance indicator that we keep.
The time they enter the parking lot or the time they place the order?
They pull up to the, in or, the ordering.
To the COD, okay.
I mean, and, and looking at this, do you really need all that parking behind it to be able, not to be able to adjust by that 13 feet to get you to the 60-foot setback?
You mean to the south of it?
Yeah.
That's what I was, that's what I was wondering.
That's what I'm saying, yeah, I'm agreeing with what you're saying.
Yeah, do they really need all of those spaces there, especially if you have the cross easement across the way?
I, I, that's keep the code, I think, per, per code, is that correct? Ian, I don't, Ian helped design that. I think that's per code. We need a certain amount of spaces per number of seats in the dining room.
Cause I think I'd, I'd kinda be more tempted to make a variance on the parking than on the 60-foot setback.
I, I, um, Ian Spence, Kimley Horn, civil engineer. Um, I think to Jason's point, um, we could work with that. This plan, the goal was to maximize parking, um, and, and, and get that double row of parking. Um, I'm not familiar if there is a cross-access agreement as, as far as parking goes. Um, but yeah, I mean, the, the plan currently shown, that double row, you know, that was the goal, to achieve that parking. Um, and then as far as the building position, um, we have 12 cars shown there. Um, really trying to keep it, you know, we're at 47 feet and then trying to maximize the amount of queuing that, that, uh.
Well, but the queuing's on the east side. We're talking about moving the building south, not moving the building east. Correct?
Or both.
Well, or both. I mean, the more important part, I think, is the, is the moving the building south 13 feet.
With that in mind, would, I mean, we, we can work with you guys. Would you guys want, um, a one-way or you guys still want the?
No, they're saying like maybe reduce the six spaces and move the building south to get rid of the six spaces.
Reduce the parking spots.
Yeah, okay.
Well, or even bump it right up to the parking spaces and just have the parking spaces on a sidewalk right against the building. That'll, that's 10 feet right there.
Yeah, we can reduce the, we can reduce that 10 feet down to at least get five or four if you wanna.
Is that like supposed to be like a patio out there?
Patio is on the, on the west, the, the rectangle on the west side.
Oh, that's your patio?
Yeah, that's the patio.
Yeah.
You seem like you just have extra space there in the park, in the parking lot. Andrew, is there a setback rule for internal? Cause I see you have a lot of setback, a 30 building, building around the property. Is that a zoning thing or is that just worked out that way?
It's from the regional PUD, the, the setback requirements here in this case.
So, those have to get worked out?
Off of town line. And you're saying, what's the south?
Yeah, like the south, cause that, your parking lot's gonna go into that 30 back, 30 foot.
They can go, um, the parking setback is 10 feet, so, um, in that case, they'd be getting just closer to that access drive. So, if that's a preferable configuration, we can certainly work with them to try to do, uh, either bypass lane or increase, just increase the space on the north. Uh, I, I think we, um, we understand that the, the trade-off of the parking, uh, is preferred to this, uh, to this setback. So, uh, we're happy to work with them.
Yeah, I mean, just bumping up against your parking, I'll buy you ten at that 13 feet right there. I mean, that's, you know.
Where do you take your truck deliveries?
Uh, good question. Uh, on this particular plan, uh, we would, there's usually, eh. I didn't think through it on this plan. I'm, I'm not sure on that question. But the trucks usually pull up, we take it right through, uh, one of the rear doors on, on the dining room, right to the kitchen.
Yeah. I mean, it's concept right now. I'd like to not see it, I'd like to keep the 60-foot setback in my opinion.
Yeah, and I think that's easily doable. I mean, it's, it's much easier to give you some variances on the setbacks and stuff to the south side than to the north side.
Parking, yeah.
Yeah.
And we can certainly require during technical review, um, a review of the reciprocal easement agreement just to confirm exactly how the parking works. Uh, so the, the zoning and the PUD are one thing, but, uh, just making sure that they have the, the legal right after the reciprocal easement, easement agreement um, would be the next piece of that. So, uh, we'll, we'll have them, uh, provide that with technical review.
Okay.
And then, and then if we move the building south, would we, um, ask them to have an escape route for the, for the drive-through?
Uh, 13 feet would provide that, so, um, we can.
Yeah, that would be easier to put in the escape route in the, yeah.
How long does it take you to build once?
Uh, the build is five to six months.
How many employees do you usually have on staff during peak times?
Uh, peak times, we'll have 15 to 20.
15 to 20?
Line people, cooks, uh, sales.
What's your average, what's your average check?
16 to 50. We had a $5 day at Deerfield opening last week. We had maybe, it's opening day, $5 day's a big deal for us. We had 1,800 people come through Deerfield last, uh, two Thursdays ago.
And that's a walk-up, right? That's not.
And that was just a walk-up, yeah. It's, uh, and we, and we probably had 50 people working. Just, I mean, it's a big celebration. Obviously, it's not daily, but it's, that shows how much excitement that we created and buzzed in the town and.
Where is that in Deerfield?
Deerfield and Waukegan.
Uh, Deerfield and Waukegan, just east of Waukegan.
It's like the, on the, I forget the name of that restaurant that used to be in that.
Joe's Donuts was there.
South, southeast corner, southeast corner of that intersection.
I know there's Bobby's Restaurant.
Sweetgreen is right there, right?
Sweetgreen, Chipotle, Starbucks. They're in a, that center's diff- difficult to navigate parking-wise on the southeast corner. We're on that northeast quadrant.
Oh.
There's a, we have a big municipal parking lot that helps. But check it out, please.
I'll be at the Shinnigaiwa one in a few months, so.
Oh, nice.
Right across the street from our hotel. I noticed there's.
Oh, very cool.
I'll probably be at the Buffalo Grove one next Thursday.
Well, I was there today. I was there today and you honored your public works person. We had a pipe burst. Like there, there was no water this, today, cause, uh, it's an intake issue. And 6:00 AM call I get like, hey, we have no water in the restaurant. The pipes are all frozen in the riser room. So, we, that's an early call and the public works from Buffalo Grove was out there and we had to defrost the pipes and get water flowing. So, that's kinda what I've been doing all day.
You said two and a half to three million volume? Seven days a week?
Seven days a week.
Hours?
Seven AM to 11:00 PM. Breakfast is seven to 10.
I saw that on your website.
Breakfast burrito is actually my favorite thing on the menu. I highly recommend, but if you do go, try and find some breakfast. And then come back for lunch and then dinner.
So, who is your main competitor?
Uh, people would say, uh, my friends have said, when they go, they're like, it's Chipotle on steroids. Um, we, the menu is, uh, uh, broader. Uh, the food is very similar in terms of bowls and burritos. Uh, we have tacos, quesadillas, kids' meals. Uh, we have minis of every item that we have. Salsas, uh, that are our own proprietary blends. Uh, so people are like, oh, it's like Chipotle, but the energy's different. Um, the energy's, uh, one of our best things about us is you come in, you're greeted with a big hola, welcome in every time. Um, and there's always music playing. The staff's dancing most of the time. It, it's just a good atmosphere that people wanna be a part of and hang out in.
Any other comments, question? Justin, you don't get to say anything?
Hi.
I mean, I, I love it when former students get a chance to come up and former players, you know.
Oh, he's your former student?
Played volleyball at Vernon Hills High School.
Nice.
Good job.
So, what's your?
What's your role here?
Yeah, what's your role? What's your forte?
I, I prepare the traffic.
You prepare the traffic?
He's our traffic engineer.
Ah, okay.
Yeah, we like when former, you know, Vernon Hills grads get to, you know, come up and say stuff, yes.
So, so you prepare the traffic. What do you think about having an escape route? Don't you agree that that, that would be helpful?
Yeah.
Yeah, come on up. That'll give you a chance to get up and.
David, are you talking about?
I was gonna ask a question. I just saw we gotta ask this.
Are you talking on the, on the north side, David? Escape route, like out of the drive-through lane?
Out of the, right. Like say, say you're in line and, and, and an emergency happens, you gotta go or whatever. You, you don't wanna be stuck there.
Yeah, there's even a slight bailout at like Portillo's and that where you can bail out as you come around the corner. Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. Hi, everyone. Justin Opitz. Uh, thanks for the introduction. Uh, traffic professional at Kimley Horn. Uh, we worked on the traffic memo for this development. So, generally, yes, if you have a, if you have an escape or bailout lane, uh, adjacent to the, to the drive-through, it, it just gives you more flexibility. Uh, another kind of layer of, of, of safety to work with. Um, you obviously do see a lot of drive-through, drive-throughs without them. Um, and generally, you know, things function normally and, and there's not too many issues, but they do give you another layer of flexibility.
Why don't you just flip the building and move it south completely? So, the drive-through present and pickup windows are on the south side of the building. Your nicer facades on the north side. There's your, there's your setback. And all your utilities would be a better hookup and your utilities because you're gonna be over the existing building, foundation.
Yeah, flip the whole project.
You know?
I do see.
And then you don't have, then customers.
Exactly what we did.
And then Milwaukee doesn't see cars lined up. They see your facade of your building.
Yeah, if you drive up windows on the.
Solve your parking problem, solve your facade problem, probably save you some money too.
Is it harder for people to get out?
Well, you'll have to look at the traffic flow. You have to work that, but that's what these guys do.
I think, I think that's what we, I, we've tried 15 iterations to get to this point and I think we've tried that a few times. We just could make that.
Well, you might be on 16.
Well, cause, cause it is a good point that they'd be looking at the better side of your building and not the drive-through would be what everybody would be seeing from 60.
If the rendering, uh, I don't know, who's, that, this rendering, so the art piece is, would be the drive-through side of, of.
Yeah, you can't see it, but you have cars in front.
You won't be able to see it cause of all the cars.
We like the north side. Or we like the full facade on the north side. Actually, I like that. I can't speak for everyone. But I get it because can you go back to the, can you go back to the previous?
Put windows on the north.
You know, the dilemma here is what they're saying is when you're, you're gonna have to come around the parking lot to order and then exit. So, either way, you're going, you're either way, you're taking a full loop. The question is, is before your order or after your order, right? So, either way, you're covering the same distance. Your customers, I'll tell you this by experience. The only downside to that is they will race faster to order versus racing to get out. So, you do create a little bit of traffic pinching with customers walking across, so. But I think that's, Andrew's team can sort that out.
Any other comments or questions? I'd like to see this get done. It'd be, I think it'd be a good addition.
That's great to hear. Thank you for that.
Do you need consent or anything?
What's that?
Is this consent or?
Uh, what do we?
Yeah, if you can get a consensus of whether the board is in favor of the concept, subject to the comments made this evening.
Okay, um, trustee Schenk?
As the comments stated, so, yeah, go ahead.
Trustee Mark?
I'd like to see.
See.
Trustee Ford? Yeah, yeah. No, okay, yeah. I'd like to see it go forward. And do you wanna give your speech, please?
Certainly, uh, and for the petitioner, uh, just remember the decision and feedback tonight is non-binding. It is provided to help, uh, the developer finalize your plans through technical review so you can present to the planning and zoning commission at a public hearing. This docket will come back to the village board for a final decision in the form of an ordinance after the public hearing. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Process.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you guys. Appreciate it. Thank you for your time.
All right. Um, next item is discussion of the zoning code amendments related to electric vehicles. Director Jennings again, right?
Yes, thank you. Um, I will try to re-brief on this. Uh, Director Vanatta and I are representing the village uh, by participating in, uh, the Mayor's Caucus ED Readiness Program, uh, which prepares municipalities to, uh, better support, uh, electric vehicle infrastructure in town. Uh, so they walk you through, uh, a series of classes basically and, uh, we participate in those, uh, bi-weekly, uh, learning, uh, various ways, uh, that the village can either by updating its code, providing public information, uh, training our staff, uh, support the rollout of electric vehicle charging uh, so that the public can have better access to, uh, uh, electric vehicles in general. So, uh, we are about a third of the way through the, uh, the program right now. Uh, the way it works is, uh, the, uh, the Mayor's Caucus staff and their consultant give you, uh, give the municipalities education. We have homework, uh, that we have to complete and each task does give us some points towards certification. We're attempting to, uh, obtain enough points, uh, for bronze certification. A, uh, a large majority of those points come from what we're discussing tonight, which is updating the zoning code, uh, to clarify the, the framework for approval, uh, of new charging stations. We have in a couple of weeks here, uh, a training for our, uh, building department inspectors uh, so that they can, uh, rapidly inspect and efficiently inspect, uh, new electric vehicle charging stations. There will be a fleet, uh, fleet services management, uh, training as well. So, uh, we're working our way through this program and, and as I said, a lot of the, the, uh, the points come from, from this. So, um, we have in town, uh, currently a handful of electric vehicle charging stations. Uh, most of them are actually inside the new garage at the Domain. Uh, in the Hawthorne Row, the, uh, the, I think 10 or 11 are in that. Uh, there are four around the mall. There's one at Kohl's. Uh, and then there's three more that are very close to Vernon Hills, but not necessarily in town. Uh, we, we have, uh, a map on the website now and listing of these locations. Uh, part of the public education component of this program. So, uh, the, the zoning regulations, uh, that I'll walk through briefly, uh, are really establishing a framework that codifies what we have already interpreted. So, uh, we don't punish people for providing charging stations. They don't count against your parking, uh, count. Um, and we have allowed some flexibility for, uh, these advertising signs that you see like the one outside of AMC. So, um, just the, the entire, uh, draft zoning code, uh, is in your packet, um, just hitting the highlights.
Well, a, a quick question. When you said it doesn't count against the parking in that, one of the things I've noticed and this picture demonstrates it, um, the charging stations need to be closer to the building because that's where the electrical source is? Is that the? Because I've noticed that in some places it kinda bumps handicap parking spaces?
So, they do need to be, uh, just for, uh, cost-effective installation, they do tend to be closer. Uh, they would not remove required handicap parking spaces, uh, but they may be very close to where the handicap parking spaces would be. Um, there are, there's no, uh, no current, uh, uh, black and white regulation for, uh, accessibility of the electric vehicle charging, but that's coming down the road. So one of the things that the, uh, the cohort is working through is trying to anticipate the need for, uh, the combination of, uh, accessible spaces and electric vehicle spaces. So, uh, they do advise us to, to sort of try to be prepared for that.
Okay.
But, uh, the, the gist of it is that if you were to convert electric vehicle, uh, convert existing parking spaces to electric vehicle charging, it wouldn't count against your required parking. So even the, if the equipment occupies an existing parking space, you count it as though a car could be parked there. Uh, so just sort of making sure that, uh, the property owners are not punished, uh, for making the decision to provide this, uh, this service. So, um, just walking through some of the, uh, the amendments. Uh, the first part is the section, uh, 3.2, uh, adding, uh, definitions that don't currently exist in the code. Uh, the next piece is a zoning framework inside Article 4. So we have a handful of different uses in Article 4 that have their own, uh, specific zoning regulations. So cell towers are a good example of this. They're a unique use, uh, they have height restrictions, location restrictions, uh, that are, uh, that need to be spelled out specifically in the code. So, uh, this would add a very similar section explaining how electric vehicle charging stations, uh, would be reviewed. So there is not, uh, in this proposed amendment, a heavy burden to locate them. Uh, there's some design guidelines, uh, but they don't have to go through a specialty use procedure. They don't have to go through a full site plan review. Uh, the only thing that triggers that review would be if they were gonna, uh, convert more than 10% of the existing parking to electric vehicle, uh, charging, or if the staff review found that they don't comply with the guidelines in some way. We would bring them for a, a full site plan review. Uh, we do have design criteria limiting the advertising display, uh, sort of matching what has been built thus far, not allowing 12-foot, 15-foot signage associated with it. But, uh, there would be some advertising, uh, directed at the parking area, not out toward the street. Uh, the final component of it is, uh, what they call retail or primary use electric vehicle charging stations. This would be the equivalent of a gas station. It is a little bit different because of the amount of time that it takes to charge a vehicle. It can be 45 minutes to an hour. So you might find, uh, in that case, a, uh, a, a customer lounge, uh, instead of the convenience store. So it would be similar. It'd be a special use review, just as the way a gas station would be, uh, but it might take a slightly different form. With that, uh, I do have a planning and zoning commission hearing scheduled, uh, on this item tomorrow night. If there are any comments that the committee has, uh, any feedback, uh, I can certainly convey that to the planning and zoning commission, um, hoping to, to move through somewhat quickly, just based on the amount of time that we have to get this completed for the, uh, for the EV readiness program.
All of these changes are related strictly to commercial parking, correct? Nothing to do with-
These relate to public, to, there are definitions that relate-
Yeah, I meant public, yeah.
Yes, but these specifically relate to, uh, being located in a shopping center.
Not a part of this here, but if I might correct, uh, for establishing, uh, this, the cost is, didn't I not reveal it's roughly, is it 75? How, how much is this cost to put a system in like this?
Do you know off the top of your head?
'Cause Chris, I thought you had talked about going back and we had two going in and it was rather expensive.
So, um, the, the equipment itself ranges in, in price from anywhere from $7,500 to, um, $15,000, depending on how many bells and whistles you get in the charging station. Um, and then every site is different depending on the power needs, the availability of power, um, how you're gonna tie it in. Um, so the, the cost can vary depending on the, the site layout.
Okay. Thank you.
We also have on the information that we've added to the website in the last month or so, um, there are links to numerous grant programs. So there's sort of these rolling, uh, grant programs, um, they all have a different cycle. Uh, so it's a different, there's, uh, several different grant programs that are, uh, encouraging different types of, uh, charging installations. So shopping centers, residential, that sort of thing. So, uh, we have that. Feel free to look through it, uh, and sign up for the news alerts on it.
Well, I believe too, when this was brought up here, is that technically, uh, the grant that we received would cover basically half of it. Was that correct?
Yeah, so the, the total cost of the project that we had was around $70,000. Um, we're receiving, uh, $20,000 in, uh, comm ed rebates for the equipment that we're installing, and then another $10,000, uh, grant that we received from the mayor's caucus.
Okay, any other comments, questions? Advice for the meeting tomorrow? No?
I did get some preliminary feedback from the mayor's caucus on this, so I, I do have some updates that I'll explain to the planning and zoning commission, just to clarify things that the, the folks who review the work, the homework for us, uh, they did have some suggestions. So, uh, it'll be slightly different, uh, when you see it the next time.
Well, again, it's something we need to adjust to because it's something fairly new and, and starting to see many, many, well, recently, almost every hotel I've stayed at has a number of these, you know, in their parking lot, 'cause it's becoming more common, so.
Absolutely.
And the next thing that people are gonna have to tussle with is multifamily buildings. What you allow and what you don't allow.
Will they ever even, I was just bringing this up with Michael, and will they ever, because you pull up, it's free. Will they ever get to a point where electricity costs something?
So that's, that's sort of, uh, at the discretion of the owner. Uh, right now, uh, there are some that are free. Uh, the, the four that have been existing the longest around the outside of the mall are, are, uh, they do have a charge associated with them. The ones that are in the Hawthorne, uh, the Hawthorne Row garage, uh, they have not, uh, decided yet exactly what they're gonna do. So at the moment, they are free, um, but they're not necessarily, uh, sure that that's gonna stay for very long.
Do you know, I'm not holding you to this, what is the cost to, to use a station then, on those predicted ones?
Depends on how the owner sets it up, so. Um, typically, the, the energy draw from the, uh, vehicle is around a dollar an hour.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Anything else? All right, and we will move on to our next item, discussion of the zoning code amendment related to home daycares?
This will be me as well. The, uh, planning and zoning commission is also scheduled to hear this one tomorrow night. Um, by way of background, uh, this, this request came to the village staff, uh, through a combination of, uh, three existing daycare operators in town, as well as DCFS made the suggestion to us. Uh, there were, uh, we have learned, uh, in speaking to DCFS, that there are seven, uh, home daycares currently licensed in Vernon Hills. Um, we, uh, in past years have had no involvement. They're considered to be a permitted accessory use, uh, under the home occupation regulations in the zoning code. Uh, there's no specific village approval required. They do require a DCFS license, and there are periodic inspections, uh, by the state fire marshal and the local fire protection district. So, uh, the way this came to us is that DCFS, in their annual renewal process this year, has, uh, begun, uh, asking the daycare providers to confirm and provide confirmation that they comply with local zoning regulations. So for the first time, DCFS has, has provided information to these daycare operators that state whatever the local, uh, zoning restrictions are. In this case, our zoning code restricts home daycares to, uh, providing care for six children at a time. Uh, the home daycare providers have, uh, for many years, uh, provided care for more than six children without knowledge of the, the village's zoning requirement. So, um, all of the home daycare operators that we've spoken with provide care for eight to 12 children. Uh, we have received no complaints over the years, uh, for the, the existing home daycare operators. So, um, what was requested of us was to, uh, have, uh, to, uh, allow these daycare operators to increase the number, uh, matching what they currently have, uh, or matching the DCFS licensing. Uh, there is no, there is no procedure in our zoning code that allows for that. It's just a, a strict limit of six and that's it. Uh, so I began to review the zoning regulations for home daycares in other towns. I found that, uh, most of our peer communities have a specialty use procedure to increase, uh, the number of children above six or eight. Uh, so it, uh, similar to any other special use, there'd be a public hearing, uh, and the daycare operator would appear in front of that town's planning and zoning commission and make the case that they can, they can, uh, provide, uh, more children, provide care for more children without causing a negative impact on their neighbors. So the recommendation is to do something similar here. Uh, I have the draft, uh, the draft code amendments in your memo. I'm happy to answer any questions on this, uh, but, but essentially, this would be similar to the, the zoning procedure uh, in most of the towns that we reviewed.
So basically, in a nutshell, it stays at six, but you can request a special use permit to up at as high as 12.
So it-
And it would require public hearing and neighbors would be notified that there is a hearing like that where they could have a, a chance to talk about?
That's, that's correct. So, uh, the only, uh, slight, uh, change to that would be DCFS has different types of licenses. So it's possible through DCFS, uh, to go through a different certification, a higher level certification program to get what's called a group license, uh, and then under that, uh, DCFS would allow homes that have, uh, an appropriate square footage, uh, staffing, et cetera, to have a group license. So, uh, in, in the case of our code, if this were to be approved, uh, their special use would have to, uh, identify the number of children that they're requesting, uh, on their DCFS.
At the hearing and that, so that, so that neighbors- 'cause the, the main thing I wanna cover is that neighbors get a chance to know what's going on.
Absolutely. That would be, uh, a required notice, just like any other public hearing. The only, uh, difference is, very similar to how, uh, a variation for residential is a lower application fee. Uh, we're recommending a lower application fee for this, uh, to, to align with that, uh, that lower charge for, uh, zoning variation for single-family.
The group license by the state, is that for more than 12?
So the group license, um, uh, in, in talking to DCFS is they can go through a, a certification program and request more than 12.
For more than 12?
But the staffing for that depends on the age range of the kids. Uh, so the, the change here would be a reference in the code to the DCFS. Uh, whatever DCFS requires, they would have to provide to have, have that number of children.
But anything over six would require-
But we could cap, we could still cap it at 12 regardless of them getting a group license, right? Like our ordinance considers like, well, we're, we're, anything over s- seven or more, you need to get a special use up to 12.
So you could sort of-
And, and we can have like-
Yeah.
Parameters, right? Like say you have to have X number of daycare workers on site at the time, yada, yada, right? We can, we can specify that, or is it gonna be case by case?
It was, so, as it's drafted right now, it would be case by case. They would have to make the, the, uh, meet the standards, basically, to show that they can do it without a negative impact. And just from speaking to the operators, uh, I know that that number does sound a little bit scary for a, a single-family house. Uh, the way that it works, generally speaking, is that that's a very limited part of the day. There'd be a family that has more than one child, uh, uh, receiving care, uh, but the other children that, uh, that come by the house are coming there after school. It's a gap between the end of school. And, um, it would be a gap between the end of school and when their parents can pick them up. So it tends to be, uh, not that many children for the entire day.
So of the seven that currently exist, what percentage typically would have more than six?
Uh, 100% currently have more than six.
So, so then to play devil's advocate, why are we? It, it sounds like, since there's been no complaints, why don't we just bump it to 12?
For future-
For future purposes.
Yeah.
And our intention is-
'Cause I'm surprised that we allowed, I mean, just because something-
Occurs.
Occurs, uh, just because everybody's going 70, doesn't mean you should just move the speed limit up to 70. You know, if, uh, uh, in other words, I think we need-
A little bit of control.
I, 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 I'm, I-
Well-
Fee, I almost object that people didn't have a, you know, they may or may not know, and it, it could be just real simple, but I mean, I, I still think we have to have some, you know, some oversight on it.
Our intention with this is for all of the existing daycares to come in and request a special use. Uh, not to consider them grandfathered in. This is, uh, this was not something that received any sort of approval. Uh, they've just been informed of it. Um, they've asked for permission to increase it, and our, our suggestion, the staff's suggestion, is in order to obtain that permission, you would have to go through special use approval.
If we changed it to over eight, up to 12, would that help alleviate some of the burden that these daycare places have to come in? Like, are they all over eight or are they all maxed out at 12? I mean, what? You said 100, there's three, right?
So there's seven total?
Seven, I'm sorry, seven.
We've had direct contact with three. There are seven total. Um, the range that DCFS provided to me was eight to 12. So all of them are in the eight to 12 range right now.
Well, and many of our neighbors, as you've pointed out in your memo, are the, that, that is the, seems to be the prevailing six.
You wanna give a grace period, so there's no fee to apply for a variance for like six months, so they can just get in line?
Well, wait, yeah, we could, I mean, we could waive a fee for anybody who previously had it.
Isn't it an annual fee? Isn't that what you're suggesting?
It's a, it's a single, uh, it's a public hearing fee. So basically, a hundred dollar public hearing fee, uh, to cover the cost of putting on that public hearing.
I mean, we could waive that for the existing-
You could, you could write it in a, in a way that does that.
Yeah, that's not a problem.
When do we do a public hearing? During a meeting, though, right?
The public hearing would be the planning and zoning commission.
Planning and zoning.
At a P and Z meeting, right?
This is two separate things. The first piece of this is changing the code to even allow that public hearing process. The second piece would be, if that passes, uh, I would reach out to each of the individual daycare operators and let them know, now you can apply, uh, and seek permission for additional children.
And that we're willing to waive fees for the-
If, if that's the direction.
I mean, if that's-
And there's been no complaints against any of these?
I don't have a record of a complaint against any of them.
Do you not have a record, 'cause we're not looking for it, or do we get record of it if there's a complaint?
I've looked through our files to find some indication that this has been an issue, and I found no, no complaints.
Should we look at DCFS, or who, who, who covers this? DCFS?
It's DCFS.
Should we look at their fi- like, like their reports, if there were any?
I ca- I could ask them, sure.
Well, it, it, but it also shows that we need this process because of the fact that so many people have been in, these, these have been in violation. And like I said, just because something's been in violation, you don't make it the new law.
It sounds like it's in violation because the DCFS code is different.
It's not aligned with our-
It's more, it's more in permissive.
Well, no, our code has always said six, correct?
Correct.
I believe we have somebody in the audience. Did you wanna address this? Sure, come on up. No, come on up, come on up here.
Yeah, speak, you can speak then.
And if you could state your name and address and, you know, okay, yeah.
Good night, everybody. My name is Bill Dattweber, and I'm one of the seven providers here in Vernon Hills. Um, this is, I'm not, I don't have many years of experience as a, a provider. This is my, um, six years, uh, for, for, um, being a provider, which is amazing experience. Uh, before that, I'm a teacher and licensed teachers here in, uh, Illinois. And this is shock for everybody of us. As I say, I'm, I'm just having six years with a license, but some of, some others of my friends, they are 20 years. And, um, this is very important because for us, it's the opportunity to teach our children, you know? Um, that's, that's very important for them because those parents who, who, I'm sorry, I'm so excited.
It's okay.
And nervous, too. Uh, we attend, uh, families with, uh, low income. And we try our best to teach them, you know, values and, and subjects as well. Uh, we follow the curriculum and we are working with DCFS. You might don't know about us, because, uh, the first time I applied for a childcare provider, I came here and they told me that I have to be direct with DCFS. And all my process, what I did, it was through them, okay? They wanna allow, they absolutely wanna allow us to, uh, renew our license with violations. Yeah? So we, we follow all the requirements they ask for. We, um- We have to do our screens. Anybody else in the house has to be with the screens as well, you know? And we have to, we have a Tyler routine. I'll just run that.
It's okay, Tony. Thank you, we'll share.
So you want to go up to 12?
We would like, I currently have my license for 12 children.
So-
And I have my assistant who always is there with us.
Yeah. I think, nobody's trying to tell you you can't have 12.
Yeah.
We're trying to figure out our process, because our process is older and it shows up to six. But DCFS, you're licensed through them from the state to have 12. So we're trying to find a way to allow you to have 12. So don't, it's okay, you don't, you know, I know, I could, yeah, you're not, but, but the, we're, still has to be some kind of process to do this because we have our policies in place. And so we either have to change them or amend our policies to allow that. Now, we'll still have to vote on it and everything, but I think having, like I said, like just all the people just have, making the process, I think we should have the special use or we just say 12. But to your point, Tom, having that special use from seven to 12, at least gives us some oversight, right?
Yeah, and it's, and it's, we're not saying you can't have it, and, and I know you're saying you were in violation, but you were, because our ordinance says six max and you were over six. So even though you weren't aware of that, you were outside of, of the ordinance of six. And, and so what we're trying to do is, we're trying to allow you to continue what you're doing and still have it be something that we have some oversight to. Like I said, the other towns, Wheeling, Lincolnshire, Libertyville, the basically the same sort of thing. The, the special use is allowed to go over the six, but, you know, it's six without, you know, so that, so that there is some opportunity to, you know, see exactly where it's happening and stuff like that. We're not, we're not saying we're going to, you know, stop you from doing it, okay?
Thank you.
Do you think we can do?
Go ahead. Yeah, go ahead.
I'm just curious why, why we think that DCFS has a number at 12? Because they, they've obviously, they're in the business of this, they know, you know, that's the appropriate number. So, so in, in my mind-
But at the same time, DCFS just said you need to be in compliance with your local-
Right.
Because, because we also got to, we also got to consider the neighbors.
Well, right. So why, why not, why not just say, if there's one, then make them come in and justify and, and, and then, I mean, like, why, why is six a magic number?
I believe too-
I mean, it says it's from 1969.
Because it, it's been kind of the number because of the amount of, of traffic and coming and going and stuff like that. I mean, if it's not six, if it's not six, if it's not 12, what, then 24, 35?
But, but 12 is the DCFS number. So, so my point is-
No, you can go over 12 with DCFS, can't you?
No, well, it says you have to have a special, a special, different license.
I can answer.
I bet you she can answer that because it's going to be a thing with personnel.
Most of our families, they have between four and three children, so there is not much traffic. By the way, in my case, I have neighbors who, they brought their kids in my place. So I don't, I don't think it's like too much problems. It's more like beneficial because they, they trust to us, they, they know us, you know, like every day. And so they, they have their kids in our place too.
Yeah, and there's, so there should be absolutely no problem getting through the special use.
And that's great. I'm just, I'm just saying either, if, if we really want to know who, who is having a home daycare, then, then maybe just make it, everyone needs a special, a special use and then it's automatically up, up to 12, just so we know. But, but it, it doesn't seem to me like it really, really, really sounds-
Are all of them permitted, or is there a lot that we don't even know about?
So we know from DCFS, there are seven that are licensed.
Right.
So you, DCFS requires a license once you have three or more unrelated children in the house. So they license it. I think the, where these became inconsistent, it was at some point the state statute changed and they, their base license was 12. I think that, looking back on it, based on the date of our original, they, they were both six and six at some point. So DCFS went to 12 at some point and then you've got this disconnect now where the, the two codes are not aligned. So that is one of the intentions of this. And we, we've been working with DCFS on how to, how to manage the current situation because we have multiple, we, we cannot, as, I can't verify from the village side that they're in compliance. So what we've said is that during this entire process, that we will allow them to continue until this process works out, which was fine for DCFS to at least give them provisional licensing through this, this school year.
And this has to go to planning and zoning and then, then back to us and-
And then back to you and then the individual, if it's, if it ends up being approved like this, then the individual operators will have to come in for their own special uses.
So will they have a, do they, currently do they have a grace period right now to operate as they were operating yesterday?
They do. We, we talked to DCFS-
They all know that they, they're running 12, they can run with 12.
Exactly. We did talk to DCFS about how best to handle that, to not disrupt both the childcare and the, and the income of the operators.
Am I correct that DCFS requires that you have a, an assistant too? I believe that's how they do it. So I don't know if it's-
That's based on the number of, number you have, right?
Yes, that's a process. You start at the beginning, they just allow you to have their childrens. So every, they come to make inspections, right? So if they see that you're able to get more, so they extend it for more. That's why, you know, some of us has like 12, right? So then they come and they do regularly inspections and then we can go up to more, what they call group. But we can't do that in Vernon Hills because of the number that, you know, it's placed in there.
Well, it basically sounds like we got to do one of two things. We either have to move our number up to 12 or keep our number at six and allow for a special use procedure to get to 12. Is that pretty much the-
Or-
Yeah, and then leave the fee, the-
Or, or even lower it to, to three or four, whatever the DCFS minimum.
Why don't we just grandfather the current ones to 12 and any new applications, it's all special. Dave, it's that special, what's your plan number? And then that way we can verify, you know-
Can we do that?
You know, it, it seems to me that all of these other communities require a special use at 12 and there's a reason for that. You want some oversight. You're dealing with children, you want to be sure that you've got some control over the situation and you, and that it's regulated properly. I'd recommend you set up an ordinance similar to these other towns, special use to go over six. So six, to go over six, we need a special use. You've got some control over each situation. I think we should do that. And I, I like what Andrew has proposed. You have each current user come in, present their situation to the board. Clearly they're going to, you know, the, the intention is to allow them to continue, but at least you can get a, a sense of what's happening with each scenario. I, I, there's a reason each town requires a special use when you go over six. And it's, it's tantamount to knowing what's happening in each situation. You have businesses in neighborhoods, right? You want to know about drop offs, you want to know that, you know, you're not going to have a problem in each residential neighborhood. So I, I, I'd recommend that you go with the program and you're saying.
Yeah, so, and this is going to be coming for P and Z for the same thing. So, so trustee Shank, your-
Yeah, as long as they have their grace period so they can still operate as they are and then a timeline of getting over, you know, it's six, over six.
I agree too, so.
I mean, I'd like to see maybe, well.
I still think if, if DCFS is requiring a license at four, is that right?
Four and up.
Four and up. That our number should be four. Like why, why do we allow-
Anything over four.
Anything, four or four and up, whatever DCFS requires a license for, seems to me that should be our number instead of-
So that would be, so what you're saying is four and anything over four, you've got to get a special use permit?
You got to get a special use permit.
I would say, most of these communities allow six without formal municipal approval. You look at Libertyville, Mondeleine, Wheeling and Lincolnshire, all four of those allow six children without formal municipal approval. So I mean, to, to reduce that down to four would be extraordinary compared to neighboring communities.
But it seems like it makes sense because they don't need a license until they have four, right?
I mean, it's-
They don't need a license with DCFS. So we've got, the people can, can open shop with five kids, they have to get a license there, but they don't need to let us know. So it just, it just seems like there's a disconnect. And, and I think the number used to be six all across the board and that's why they kept it that way.
Yeah.
But, but it just, the numbers don't, don't make sense to me in terms of that. I don't really care that much, but it just, but it just seems like that would make more sense, that if you need a DCFS license, then you need to let us know.
It would, it would be consistent.
Right. Instead of, instead of, oh, you need a DCFS license because you've got five, but we don't need to know unless you get that sixth one. That, that doesn't-
Well, but still, DCFS still lets us know, correct?
DCFS now requires the, the operator to confirm that they're in compliance. So this-
That's the problem.
This is the first time that we have had that direct communication about this.
Okay. Trustee Forster, your thoughts?
I think that will help line things up a little bit more with consistency, the four and the four.
All right.
I just think that makes it more logical.
Send it to planning and zoning with our thoughts are that it should either be four and a special use to go to 12 or six and a special use to go to 12 and let's see what P and Z says and is that-
They'll come with the recommendation to you.
Yeah.
Yes.
And then, and then we'll find a way to, you know-
But there is not a still a room for a licensed group for Vernon Hills?
So, well, that, that's a different question. So you're asking, could you have even more if you apply through, through DCFS to have a much larger thing?
More than 12?
That, so to, to get the group policy, so to speak.
That's going to happen.
What's that?
We're going to, do we have a policy on that right now?
We don't.
No. Ordinance on that?
Well, now you're starting to get into big time commercial in a residential neighborhood.
One of the, just one, just one thought from the staff side of this, in, in the special use process, that is something that each individual person would have, each individual operator would have to explain. So in talking to the, the three that we've talked to, the, their belief is that it's most likely going to be after school, a, a brief period of time after school, maybe before school. That would come out during the public hearing. So exactly how they operate could be part of their individual special use.
Well, let's see what, let's see what planning and zoning says.
I don't think we, I don't, I don't think that our town, we should go over 12. So if somebody comes in with a group DCFS, I don't think we should allow over 12 at this time.
Was that your hope? I mean, were you, were you thinking about expanding even further?
What, 16, 20, 25, 30? What, give me a number.
16 is the maximum. And you know-
That's DCFS maximums?
Sixty, yeah. And it's, it's four people. Four people, they got to take care of the children. Now only one, only two, four people.
Okay, and, and do all the four people that, do, do the four people that watch the children live in your home?
Not necessarily, but it has to be-
So you've got employees that come?
Yeah.
Where do they park? See, there's the thing. If you, now you've got four employees that have to park on your street or in your dr- I mean, it's, that, that's one of the reasons I think we need the oversight.
Yeah. In my, I, I'm the other provider. In my case, my wife, my daughter and me, we are two people in the house, so.
See, but what I'm saying is there may be somebody else that's bringing in three or four people from the outside and now you're, now you're getting, now you're getting into why we need some oversight on it. Because if all of a sudden the neighbors come in saying, well, there's all these cars parked there.
Now, now it's a drive through business.
Yeah.
We've been doing that for about 17 years and we never had any complaint from the neighborhood.
And that's a good thing.
The, the main thing is the traffic around the, around the neighborhood or what, what is the main thing?
Parking, just, just all of the above and the parking and, and, you know, because, because you have the three people that live with you, it's easier for you. Somebody else might not have exactly that going on, so that's why we need the oversight. And that's why we would allow yours to go and maybe have questions on somebody else's.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
Well, to attorney Feralis' point, it's, it's children. I mean, we're talking about children, other people's children too.
Yep, absolutely.
So that kind of the overriding and then how it affects your neighbors too. So the care they're getting, are you able to handle the care and license for it and then the effect around your, your neighborhood?
Does DCFS look at the actual space, the home, the size of the backyard, the fencing and all those things?
Even the fire department, they go and inspect everything.
Yeah.
Every single place in the house, they inspect it and they, they, they check if everything is according with the DCF regulation, they, they sign it, they sign the permit.
Yeah, they check, they check all that.
Even, even that, we had a lot of classes in order to take care of the childrens.
Yeah.
We had fingerprints and all that. Every people in the house has been training to have childrens in the house.
Yeah.
Accelerate.
We don't just have childrens.
DCFS covers all that.
Do you have the-
All right, so we'll just, you know, you've got some thoughts here from the board to take the planning and zoning and what it has to go through is planning and zoning will go through it, then it'll come back to, to here and we'll go through more discussion on it before we get to the final, okay? But please, it's not an attempt to stop even doing what you're doing.
Yeah.
Okay?
Proceed.
Is there an official statement of a grace period for here for these, for them, Andrew? So they know that they, they are currently in violation, but there is a grace period? Do they have documentation and writing with that?
What we have had with these, so DCFS has agreed to renew licenses based on the fact that the village of Vernon Hills is working through at least a review of a procedure for this.
I just want to make sure there's something in writing that-
I don't know for sure what DCFS has provided, but we-
Well, for us, for our protection.
We provided the June 15th date so that they can work through.
Okay.
We thought that that was adequate time to get through both this and potentially special uses.
So do these special use permits need to be renewed every year or would they-
No, they don't. They would need to be, if they discontinue it, it would, it would become void at that point, but they don't need to renew every year. You could, in the case of home daycare, require a periodic review if you, if you wanted to recommend something like that. But generally speaking, a special use once granted continues.
Is there also, are we, have we ever thought about, is there a number of, you know, maximum number of these type of daycares in a community or anything or?
So one of, one of the things that I had suggested in this, in the draft is that in the, during the public hearing process, the planning and zoning commission would review each one individually based on things like access to outdoor space, proximity to an existing home daycare. So having two right next to each other would be viewed differently. The, the second one coming in might not receive such a favorable review if it's going to be adding so much traffic to a, a small area.
Okay. All right.